Welcome, everybody, to the August 14, 2024 special meeting. Tonight we'll have a-- this is a very short special meeting about-- topic is employment candidate consideration. CA PC part-time finance director. And because of our time, I thought it's urgent enough to call a special meeting. So we're going to have a roll call, just so we know who's here. Bradley?
What last name do you want me to use?
Wilson.
Wilson. Heather Wilson?
Here.
David Avenzino. Anybody know?
He's out.
Out. Alan Polk?
Here.
Steve Holyfield?
Here.
Sheera Faust?
Here.
Bradley Tate Green?
Here.
And Robert Smith?
Here.
Okay. I guess we start off by welcoming Heather and Robert to your first meeting with the CA PC. Thanks for doing this. We appreciate your time and effort here.
Thank you.
So getting right to the nuts and bolts of this. We have received very few applications for the financial director's position that was vacated by Scott Barden weeks ago or months ago. I can't remember when it was now. Yeah, so we've gotten just a couple of applications. We were kicking around the idea of maybe hiring an agency to do it if we couldn't find an individual. We did receive one application. And Mr. Atkins and Mr. Maloney said they didn't think he met the minimum qualifications, so we did not consider even interviewing him. But we did receive an application from Mr. Ty Reed. And I think-- did everybody get an application from Mr. Reed?
No, I don't think we did. Thank you.
But based on our time restraint, I told Ms. Maloney, we're basing down, looking at our budget. This year's budget wrapping up, next year's budget getting going. We can't really take time to mess with this. Also, this vacancy causes more work for Mike and the office staff and can cause confusion in tracking down every dime where it's going and stuff. Everything looks really good right now. I don't think we're looking at any kind of major problem with the finances. But I'd feel better once we get a person in there that's qualified and takes hold of this and somebody we can call and say, what's going on here? So we have-- did everybody get Mr.?
Ty.
Ty Reed's application? So Michael Atkins and myself and Mike met with him the other day and did a pre-interview. And we went over what the job entails and what his qualifications are. And we felt really good. Mike-- Mr. Atkins recommended him, right, Michael? Yeah, see him nodding back there? And I rely on his experience. He's a financial director for the city. He knows a lot more about finances than I do. So I always refer to the experts when it comes to this stuff. I told Mike, he could be making stuff up. I wouldn't know it. So I appreciate that. So I'm bringing the commission now to say, we interviewed him. We feel good. But I am just running the meetings as chair. I don't make decisions. So it's up to the commission. Do you want to do another round of interviews? Do you feel confident with Mr. Reed? What do you want to do with this? So I do think that the time is a factor here that we want to move as quickly as possible. And Mr. Reed's here, if you want to ask him any questions.
I was thinking, we move into executive session. I mean, talking about hiring, firing, it's normally our protocol.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor of moving into executive session?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Say no. We are moving into executive session for the purpose of human resources, issues of hiring, setting salary, and all the in-between of that, okay? Thank you.
Colin Pope made a motion, seconded by Sheera Faust, to end our executive session. And now we need a motion to start our regular meeting.
I'll make a motion to start the regular workshop.
Second.
Sheera Faust made a motion and Colin Pope seconded to start our regular meeting, which actually we're late about, we apologize for. So ending the executive session, we probably should go ahead and make a motion to see what we decided to do. You want to do that, Colin? Can you figure it out?
I move that we have our executive director reach out to all of the local firms, financial agencies in town to get quotes on being our financial agency. But that does not disclude any individual applicants.
Yeah. So have a second.
Second.
Colin Pope made a motion and Bradley Tate Green seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 And for clarification, we just want to see what our other options are. We're not saying no to any applicants at this time. We just have two weeks to make a decision or to see what other options we might have as an aid for agencies, okay? So our workshop today, go ahead and, I guess we'll go ahead and call, roll. Bradley.
Heather Wilson.
Here.
David is out. Colin Pope.
Here.
Steve Holyfield.
Here.
Sheera Faust.
Here.
Bradley Tate Green. President Robert Schmidt.
Here.
Okay, so as a special workshop, we have really one topic, and that is the VRBO. Mike?
Over the past, there we go. Over the past two or three years, online booking services have dominated really what happens when somebody wants to take a vacation. They get on the telephone, or they go into a lab, and they look for, you know, that destination. Then they are quite frankly, generally directed toward one of a dozen different resources, one of which is Airbnb, obviously Expedia is one of those. What we have discovered, however, is a lot of our collectors today are getting bookings from VRBO, vacation rentals by owner. VRBO does remit taxes to municipalities that are in their system, which most are. We have not, however, done that. Some of our sister cities such as Bella Vista, Rogers, Little Rock, and so forth have taken advantage of this over the course of time, but we have not. This could represent a pretty good lift in income to the city at a time particularly when short-term rentals are coming under a little bit of a heated problem. Some people would rather go ahead and turn them into long-term or something else. So in this vein, I'd like to go ahead and present to the commission at this point the discussion about vacation rentals by owner and how that works. And what I've done is I've asked Sandy Martin here this afternoon to kind of explain that procedure, how it works, and the advantages for Eureka Springs to be able to move into that avenue. I think it's very important, and Sandy really knows the ropes here. Sandy?
I think, maybe I do. Yeah, I worked with Bella Vista to get theirs in place, their contract. And just to add on what Mike was saying, the primary difference between VRBO and Airbnb and some of the others are that VRBO only does whole homes, so they have a tendency to have a higher quality stock of rentals, which means more revenue, which means more taxes, which is good. They don't do single rooms, they don't do campsites or any of that stuff like Airbnb does. And as you all know, Airbnb is getting into renting single rooms now and glamping and all that stuff. And what we found in Bella Vista was interesting because a lot of people were getting disenchanted with Airbnb, so they would book both on VRBO as well as Airbnb. And eventually several of them just dropped Airbnb and went with VRBO. Obviously, those are people who weren't interested in single homes or, or single rooms rather or anything like that. The state of Arkansas also has an arrangement with the RBO, so the state gets their taxes as well. And just to give you an idea, we started in Bella Vista October of 2022, and that year, hang on, can't hear or see, that year we collected $1,445. In 2023, we collected a little under $38,000. And right now through April, we've collected a little under $19,000, so it's going to beat that. It's going to be probably about a $40,000, $45,000 increase in our revenue, which is great. Airbnb, we saw it go down slightly, but not that much, you know, not, not to make up the difference of the RBO, so we know people are still doing it dual. It's a fairly simple process. Bella Vista and Eureka share Bill Watkins for legal. We had Bill look at the, I researched several of the agreements, and for the most part, with the exception of Little Rock, all of them did one version of pretty much the standard voluntary agreement. And I think you have a copy of the voluntary agreement, do you not? Do you?
There should be. Two there. I don't think we got anything.
There's, I sent my, their standard, HomeAway's standard voluntary agreement, which is pretty okay. And then Little Rock, Little Rock was the one that really negotiated a slightly different contract with it. They, Little Rock legally eased it, you know, and changed the format, all the basic information that's in the voluntary agreement is still in there, but they did add kind of a significant section in that you might want to consider because they, they are negotiable to a certain extent. They added a homeowner liability section, which was, was kind of good, and you could read that when Mike brings them down for you. And made it clear that it was gross revenue receipts throughout the document, which the volunteer document does not. We, in Bella Vista, we went with the standard voluntary agreement because it was simpler. We asked Bill to double-check it on a couple of items, one, and he approved all but one And basically, we questioned, there were some things as far as, you know, liability and at the commissioners and who can sign it. And he said, it's fine, there's no personal liability, and the commission is authorized to sign it. But what we did add is there's a section on providing information and data. And the one thing Bill added was unless required by law. Our question was, what happens if we get a FOIA? We have to provide information, and they should be obligated to that. That was the only thing that we changed in Bella Vista, was to add that. So, and it's pretty straight ahead, it's a two-page document. Took about three weeks to get it processed. And on the Little Rock, they collect through, not VRBO, but through HomeAway, that's who the checks will come from. And on the Little Rock contract, there are two contacts with HomeAway and VRBO. That should be your direct contact on it, so. That's kind of the long and the short of it.
Miss Sandy, so VRBO, you said that they actually send out the tax checks to the city of Bella Vista?
Yeah. Just like Airbnb, they submit.
Well, believe our Airbnb, we have to submit the checks to the CAPC. My Airbnb doesn't submit the taxes straight to the CAPC. They submit the report, and then we have to write the check.
That's unusual.
I think when we were on Airbnb, it was the same. I think it relinquished all the taxes for state, city, the other tax brackets, but not the CAPC.
But that could just be our contract with Airbnb.
It is.
And so I kind of love the idea of VRBO actually skipping the homeowner and just paying the taxes for them.
Yeah, yeah. So they don't, they don't collect the 3% lodging for Eureka. I would go back and check that agreement because it's, I mean, Bella Vista gets between 140 and 175 grand from Airbnb.
Yeah, and I'd love for us to look into our Airbnb contract. If that's an option, that Airbnb directly pays us, that would be way better.
And they pay promptly.
They do?
Yeah.
I mean, one thing I know.
Am I double-paying? So some people are, because Airbnb says that, like you said, they pay the city and state tax.
We don't do it anymore, we're not a participant, but when we were, I believe that that was the only one that they did not require.
Was the CAPC.
That they didn't pull themselves and then remit on our behalf.
Yeah, I'd look into it because it's a lot cleaner, so much easier.
Hold on, hold on. Daniel, we want, walk up to the mic, we can't hear you, we want everything on the record. And Robert, go ahead.
So when I learned it properly today, that VRBO, to be clear, it's, okay, it belongs to that HomeAway, but it's also part of the Expedia group. So it's actually a very big apparatus. And I was actually shocked to learn that they collect the taxes, but they don't pay them. I mean, where in the world does that go away with no problems? And I mean, I've noticed there's one hotel, used to be a hotel, all of a sudden, it's not a hotel anymore. It is advertised on VRBO. And you said before, Sandy, that this is only for homes. No, it's not. There's one hotel, if not more, they use that platform, and they would completely circumvent any taxes paying to the city, to the state, to us, and we definitely have to stop it. If there's legal ways, we should demand it. And if we have to sign a contract with them, well, we should have it yesterday.
You're absolutely right, and that's the problem. HomeAway is sneaky in that, that they don't, they don't push that there's a contract that they're obligated to collect the taxes. That's why you do have to have that. And they do, Expedia and some of the other ancillary companies book the individual rooms. If you're, if you're on VRBO, it's usually that, that whole home type that they do. But you're absolutely right, without a contract, they're not going to pay attention to you. And then they are legally obligated to remit those taxes. Another thing that we did in Bella Vista is we modified the AMP gross receipts form that are supposed to be turned in every month, and we have them put in their gross revenue receipts from Airbnb, VRBO, and Evolve. And then they mark zero and tax due, indicating. But we can kind of keep track then of how much is coming in through those platforms, and if it closely matches what we get from VRBO, HomeAway, and Airbnb, then we can, you know, and Vacasa's another one that we collect taxes from.
I mean, this, you know, when I look for my hotel, I mean, when I started running the hotel, the first thing is you have to have a state-approved tax paper, and then you also have to apply for the CAPC that they grant you the approval that you're a tax collector. And then my, our reporting goes straight every month to the tax entities. And I'm just surprised that the VRBO can just circumvent that. Shouldn't that be on the owner of the property? That they are actually, they have to apply for a tax permit, and they should apply for the CAPC and report to the CAPC like everybody, every other business, like restaurants and lodging businesses have to do it. So we have a clear information about each place, how much they collect and how much they remit to the CAPC and to others. I'm just surprised that this works that way and they were able to get away.
We contacted the state, too, to see if there was any leverage from their end, and they basically said, no, it's on individual municipality contracts and agreements. So, you know, and like I said, and you pointed out, HomeAway is not going to go out of their way to say, hey, you've got a great tourist economy with great lodging, sign this contract, and we'll collect your taxes for you.
But these, these individual places, I mean, they still have to apply for a business license by the city, right? So, I mean, I know you're not a city official, so you can't really answer that question. But, but the city, when they issue a business license, it should be automatically connected to those tax permits.
I think you're assuming that those people are applying for a business license.
They should.
They should be.
I know, but it's a legal point. I mean, like, if I, if I collect CAPC taxes and then I don't pay it to the CAPC, I'm sure I will have an audit very quickly. Well, once you have a finance director or a finance, accounting.
The other thing, Robert, that the contract does, the agreement does with VRBO, their homeowners can select for them not to collect the taxes. And that is problematic, too, because then you have to definitely know who the property owner is and get on them, you know, to turn in the paperwork. By virtue of this agreement, anything that's booked through HomeAway or VRBO has to be accounted for. And they won't provide individual information. They will give and do past years and redact all the personal information, but they'll give addresses so that you can at least check it, but they won't do it in a current year. But there is a selective out for VRBO listeners that they can say, no, we'll pay the taxes ourselves.
Well, is there a downside?
I'm sorry?
Or is there a downside? I mean, I don't know that, I've never seen a downside of this.
No, absolutely not.
Well, we're almost two years in in Bella Vista, and, you know, they, they pay just as well, like clockwork. A date is set in your contract, and they pay, and we haven't had any problems.
Does the city council need to make the approval on this, or is it a commission-based?
You have the full authority, or the city does.
But, but is that?
In Little Rock, it was done by the city.
But would you, I mean, that contract will also make sure that they will pay to the city, not just the CAPC tax? Or is that, I mean, isn't that something maybe we should address with the city council and say, well, we have rules for Airbnbs, we have rules for bed and breakfast, we have rules for hotels. So shouldn't the city go out and maybe create rules for VRBOs? And say, or anything what works the same, the same way, to make sure if you do business, I mean, we're very, the city is very strict on how to do business in Eureka Springs. And, and so now we have all of a sudden something that just circumvents everything, and we're just looking into an empty pocket. And in my opinion, the city should have rules and say, if you do VRBO, you have to pay taxes, you're responsible that those taxes are paid as a homeowner. And, and I mean, like, we're talking, like I said, the hotel, which is listed on VRBO, they have over 20 rooms. And what's the difference to my business? So I can just change it and say, well, I'll make my hotel a VRBO and collect the 14.38% and just don't pay the taxes, it's not my problem, I just keep it in my pocket. And there's no penalty on that? There's no control over it? I can't believe that this works.
I believe you're, I believe you're misunderstanding what this would do to a degree. So it's already illegal for people to have VRBO and not pay their taxes.
Yes.
If you run a business in Eureka Springs, whether it's a VRBO or anything, you have to have a business license, you have to pay your taxes. If you're not doing that, you're breaking the law.
Right.
Period. So us doing this VRBO contract doesn't change that. What it does is say that, that little hole that people have been hiding in to avoid the law, to avoid paying the taxes that they're already supposed to be paying, they're just hiding in this little void.
Yeah, I understand.
What we're doing is we're saying, all right, VRBO, tell us who it is that's not paying. So it's, it's not, like, you wouldn't be able to change your thing and go hide out and not break the law. You'd still be breaking the law if you changed your business to operating as a VRBO.
I think it also removes the money from those people to see it come into their accounts. If it's gone right away because VRBO remits it, then it's not coming to those folks, and then they're not having the responsibility of remittance themselves, which in turn I think is going to bring better numbers.
Well, and the difference in this is because municipalities have different AMP tax levels. This commits them to pay that discrete tax level. And they are obligated through the state and through the city to pay all their other taxes. And that is not what this is. That's why, that's why it sits in the commission's hands to basically do it on it.
I mean, so on the other hand, would, would the CAPC have a right to audit a business who is listed as a VRBO?
Absolutely. As a matter of fact, again, to mention Bella Vista, we went with a platform called Granicus. I don't know if you've heard of it, I know Mike has. There are several out there. Actually, there's two that do the in-depth, and they web crawl different addresses that are listed on Airbnb, VRBO, Expedia, all the different things. You can do an audit management from that platform. Hot Springs uses Government OS, for example. And you get the county assessor file. They update all those addresses on a quarterly basis, so it's always updated. They do the web crawl, and then you can go in and you can pull a particular address, or you can pull all VRBO, all air DNA, or whatever it is, get that full list. And then what Bella Vista did is provide that to, City Planning is doing their short-term permits, provide that list on an ongoing basis to City Planning. They send an audit letter out to, you know, to that thing. We understand, you know, you've been advertising on, they have to prove that it's either no longer correct, and they give you the, those platforms give you the date and the amount of the booking. So you can actually kind of project what that property has made over the last year, two years, I think to go back three years or something like that. So there are ways that you can audit that. It's about a 25 grand investment to do it. They also have an automatic audit management system where you can create a letter, you can send it to them, like, here's your online portal pay thing. We tried that in Bella Vista, and it failed miserably. That wasn't it. But we kept the monitoring module, and we actually shared it with the City Planning, and Ida might be interested in that.
What, what did you call that service? Ran?
Granicus, G-R-A-N-I-C-U-S.
GOS, which I have seen the demo on, is something that Kyle Palmer, in our planning commission here, is taking a look at. In fact, we kind of shared a demo one day, it's a lengthy one. But they took Myrtle Beach, South Carolina, is a good example, with lots of properties. And they were able to extrapolate a tremendous amount of data out of that. And to Sandy's point, those that all of a sudden pop up for like a week, and then they go away, they pop up again, kind of like flash in the night, all of a sudden, we're renting rooms that we're not, then we're renting rooms that we're not. Well, they find those, basically through web crawling, to determine who's, you know, doing it legally.
We've been watching.
Myrtle Beach would be huge, but in reference to something like Eureka Springs, we're still interested in those numbers, and that's why they approached our planning commission about that, too. It is pricey, that's the point.
Yeah, and it, but you can, you can export everything in an Excel spreadsheet, which is nice, because, you know, you can slice and dice that any way you want to and share it. But it makes it really hard for somebody to get away with too much. You know, if you've got that information, you've got a track record, and you can go back in history. And they also put a link into the actual listing, so you can go and say, yes, that's, that's my house.
That's your house.
You know, or no, no, it's not. It's not that they don't make mistakes sometimes. We've had that happen a couple of times, somebody said, no, that's Circle, and my address is Lane, or something like that. But the fact that it's tied to the assessor's list, you have a current ownership, you can find the owner pretty easily.
Bill, Bill Watkins represents Bella Vista as well as represents us, so he's taken Bella Vista through this. And it didn't take really very long to do it, because I recall.
No, and I mentioned, while you were upstairs, I mentioned the only thing, we, Bella Vista stuck with the standard contract, but on, if you all have it now, I think it is, I think it is. Section, number nine. That's the section, and that's the only thing Bill had us add, was as required by law, to make sure that there's no FOIA issue. That's the only change that he made.
I read both of these contracts, and to address concerns in three separate places, it says homeowners still have complete responsibility, and HomeAway notifies the homeowners or the property management companies, whomever the person on record is, they are notified that they are still obligated to follow all of the laws of the jurisdiction where that house is. It's very thorough, these are, I mean, these are great contracts.
Or it has to be.
Well, and.
I mean, it's your business, it's your home, you pay your taxes. You can't delegate the taxes and believe, oh, they will pay. It's your, you're at the.
But there, I think what, what it is, is HomeAway is spelling it out very specifically. You don't get to get away with anything, and we're letting you know that. They, they have it here, they will notify the homeowners within 30 days of this contract being executed. To tell them that they're doing their due diligence as well. And also, just as an aside, jurisdiction is in Arkansas, and that's very advantageous as well, so.
I mean, but I'm surprised that a company like HomeAway collects taxes and just don't care. Like, oh, you have to demand it, or you have to ask for it. It should be just a normal thing, that they just pay what they collect.
They don't, they don't run around looking for municipalities, though, that's the point. That's not their concept, the point.
They don't have economic nexus.
They don't have the manpower.
We have to be ahead of the game and do what we need to do.
They're not under the jurisdiction of economic nexus, that's why.
Luckily, we already have it in our bylaws that if you have lodging, overnight lodging, you have to pay 3% to the CAPC, no matter how, which shape and form you post your listing, doesn't matter. Your lodging, you have to pay this tax. This is just simply saying, we're not relying on the trustworthiness of the homeowner. We are strictly saying, hey, VRBO, here's what's happening, send us a check.
And they are legally obligated and bound by this.
Yeah.
And that's, to your point, Heather, there, when you read through this contract, my first thing was, they're covering their butts.
They are.
Right.
Because they, once they get into an agreement legally with the municipality or state, they're on the line. So they want to make sure they pass that obligation along to the individual homeowner and their clients.
So what, what will be our next step? I mean, I'd like to see this agreement, if we call it that way, very soon be implemented. But I would also support a way that we. But I would also support a way that we go back at least two or three years and ask for information about past businesses who didn't pay.
I don't think they'll give that to you without a contract.
Right. I mean, we need to have this contract and see if we can get, you know, like a way to audit those businesses and say, okay, we like to have a list of...or whatever.
They will give you a number, Robert, and you can do that when you're negotiating. I would recommend that you contact one of the two contacts on Little Rock and talk directly to them and, you know, do any modification and I think what Bill suggested in the Bella Vista should definitely be included. Then you can ask them for a number of approximately how many in Carroll County they have and how many in Eureka. And I say Carroll County and Eureka because the other thing you need to be aware of that this has to be done pretty quickly, if and when Holiday Island AMP passes, they're going after the same thing. So what Eureka has been collecting out of the 63, you know, 72631 is now going to be obligated to them. So and you don't want the reverse and the same confusion for them to have an agreement with HomeAway first and then have to go in and battle.
Good point.
Can you...how would that be a battle? I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand that.
How would that...
So I didn't understand what you mean by if they get it first, there would be a contractual battle?
Well, there will be a contractual discussion on...because it's by zip code. Right now with Airbnb, they're not really discriminating between, you know, because people in Holiday Island use Eureka Springs, Arkansas, 72631. And so you have a hodgepodge lift...list that doesn't only include Eureka Springs properties. You include some that are out in Eureka West as well.
Okay.
So my point was that if Holiday Island does their agreement and they carve out the 72631, then Eureka's going to lose the revenue that's coming in from that.
We wouldn't be able to tax 72631 because they're not within city limits.
They're not CAPC.
Right. But an Airbnb and a VRBO isn't that discriminating. You're realizing revenue outside of 72632 now with Airbnb.
We are collecting taxes on outside of city limit properties? That doesn't seem...
No, that's not right.
Like the...
I mean, you have to be...
I think you need to check into it.
I mean, I'd love for us to be collecting more taxes, like, let's go, Turpatine Creek.
Do we really want to look into it that far?
That's what you have. Like, let's say you go to Gaskin's Cabin for dinner, you don't pay CAPC tax out there.
No.
And that's 72631.
Yeah.
But as far as I remember, 72632, that if you go by the zip code, that would be all the collect...I mean, you're pretty much covering everybody who should pay.
So I have another question that kind of leads me into. So if Eureka West you brought up, if they're outside of the city limits, yet they have the same zip code, Airbnb will collect the taxes for Eureka Springs or VRBO will?
Airbnb, they collect by the city name. So if somebody says Eureka Springs...
Really?
Yeah. That's the way it was because, again, we went through that in Bella Vista, too. There were a couple of fringe areas that weren't in the 14015's zip code, but they collect by city name. So it gets tricky.
So did you all have to refund those people their taxes?
Nope.
I'd be knocking on the door.
We included them on the website and welcomed them to the AMP.
Well, but I want to say...
And they were fine with it.
But that is...isn't that the problem for the business, how they list? I mean, like, if I would be in an area where I don't have to pay CAPC taxes, I mean, I would fight or discuss with them and explain it and say, look, on my reservation, you don't need to collect that tax because I don't have to pay that. And that is a thing between the property owner and his agreement, that shouldn't affect us in any way.
It shouldn't.
So it's not our problem. And if they charge CAPC tax, it's actually a disadvantage for them because they're more expensive or same level than in-the-city businesses. So for me, as an in-the-city business, I wouldn't care if they charged the same tax amount. It's actually, for me, better because they look better on this total.
I think we're getting off the topic, though.
Well, and they're both very...
We're down a rabbit hole right now.
They're both very transparent that they collect the accommodations taxes, VRBO and Airbnb. So, I mean, the homeowner shouldn't be surprised. You know, when they get that, I don't know if you've ever seen or you ever received or used the Airbnb, they're pretty transparent about, you know, separating their clean fees and all that.
You say we're getting down a rabbit hole.
If you're okay with this, if you're fine with this, let me get ahold of Bill Watkins tomorrow, well, it'll be on Monday, but to go ahead and ask him to pull together the data, information that he needs to go ahead and move forward with this, if you're okay with that. You can take a look at the contract proposal anyway, you don't have to vote on it, but at least you'll see it in Eureka Springs terms and that way you'll have something more foundational to work on. I think the point being, as Sandy suggested, the lift it will bring is substantial. It's something that we really do need to have a handle on. What happens to Holiday Island is, you know, kind of like what happens in any election, we don't know. But what we do know is that there is money that's being left on the table that we are not collecting because of VRBO and HomeAway. I think that's really what makes more sense here.
I want to ask a clarification. One of our citizens or business owners said, heard they were having this workshop and they thought it was an online reservation company like JackRabbit. This is nothing like JackRabbit.
Not at all. This has nothing to do with online bookings or anything else like this. This is strictly a financial agreement between the AMP and the booking platform.
Okay.
That's all it is.
I just wanted to clarify that in case people are concerned out in the community. I think it upset some people that heard that we're trying to...
Yeah, no, not a booking platform.
If you talk about JackRabbit, just to say that, it's only a platform to connect with your business. What...I mean, it's literally a link on JackRabbit which goes straight to your booking system.
I think...
It's not like a, let's say, a TripAdvisor advertising where you have Booking.com, Expedia and everything else and you click on that and it goes to their booking system. It...JackRabbit is just like a transfer point and it doesn't really take bookings at all.
Doesn't have anything to do with this.
It goes to your individual booking system.
Okay.
I don't think any of this had anything to do with reservation systems at all. I think it's just regarding tax remittance and who will remit it. Will it be the citizen themselves or the homeowner versus will it be VRBO, Airbnb? And I think the advantages are larger to going with the large company that does this for a living versus somebody who's going to get busy with their own other responsibilities and potentially be delinquent.
I was going to make that point myself. Like, I'd love...anytime somebody says auto pay or auto draft or any of that, I'm like, please do, because I'm tired of getting to do stuff.
Right.
And yeah, so anything that we can do to have other people help us to make sure that everyone's following the law, I think that's what this is really about, is saying that we don't trust people to remit their own. You guys obviously got a $45,000 increase. That's a lot of taxes that people aren't paying. So I love this. I definitely think that we should look into our Airbnb one and see if they could force remittance instead of leaving it up to the homeowner. But also, I also am kind of weary about VRBO trying to collect taxes from outside of city limits. It's nice because, yeah, we might get extra money, but at the same time, I know there's a lot of resorts and Airbnbs out on Beaver Lake, Eureka West, that when you start taking 3% away from them, they will come at you. And so I don't want to take taxes from people who shouldn't be paying taxes. That's wrong.
And I think what you could do on that, when you ask, when you're negotiating with HomeAway...
Yes, when you get with Bill on that.
Just ask them a clarification. Can we give you eight discrete zip code to collect from? And then that way it'll be done and in their system.
Yeah, so I think we should move forward with this, but I definitely think that we need to bring that to Bill's attention to make sure that we don't have an issue in the future.
Well, as business owner, it's the same thing. You know your taxes and your responsibilities. I mean, and if you pay...if your customers get ripped off of a tax they shouldn't pay, you, as a business owner, should be the first one who's alerted and should correct it and fight for your customer. That's the way I look at it. But yes, it is not right if they have to pay something they shouldn't have to.
You should put a lot of faith in individuals.
I know.
Any more questions for Ms. Martin?
Thank you.
If you'd like to see a couple of screenshots of Granicus and how they do the audit, I'll be more than happy to shoot those to Mike to get out to you.
Toby, great.
That would be interesting, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, man.
Thank you.
Anybody else here want to talk about this issue? Anybody else in the audience? Everybody just came to watch? Appreciate you being here.
Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else have anything they want to say about this?
The only other thing is, sorry, the only other thing that I wanted to point out is if entering into the contract, reading through both of those, there are 30-day outs. So we would not be locked in for a full year. We wouldn't...if in 30 days we're saying, no, this is favorable in writing, we can terminate the contract. That's...those are favorable terms.
Good point. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. We only have one other thing on our agenda, there's media liaison, Mr. Pope. Did you put this on the agenda?
I did not put this on the agenda, but I can...I think I know what it speaks to. We talked about the media liaison as a role, kind of like chairman and treasurer, but there was no definitive job title, if you would, no paperwork behind it. And so I kind of sent something to Danielle, I feel like it's three months ago, with all the fun that we've had lately. But it was just to get some more of role discussion about what a media liaison is supposed to do and their responsibilities.
Okay. Are you going to work on writing something up?
I did have it. I didn't know that this was here for today, otherwise I would have came more prepared.
Okay. We can put it on the meeting agenda in two weeks.
That's fine. Yeah, I think it was mostly set, we did have a couple changes. Danielle, do you have any? She's prepared. See?
Got it. Ten minutes.
Okay. So, "Resolution Establishing Authority of Marketing Liaison. Whereas the City of Eureka Springs City Advertising Promotion Commission recognizes the need for effective marketing strategies to promote tourism and support the city's advertising and promotions endeavors. Whereas the CAPC acknowledges the importance of having a designated marketing liaison to oversee and execute marketing decisions on behalf of the commission and whereas, insert name, currently serving as marketing liaison, has demonstrated competence and understanding of the CAPC's goals and objectives in marketing initiatives. Now therefore it be resolved that the CAPC hereby grants, insert name, marketing liaison the authority to make marketing decisions and take actions on behalf of the commission subject to the following terms and conditions. Scope of authority, compliance with policies, reporting and accountability, consultations and communication, transparency, term of review." Each one of those has another sentence to go with it to further explain it. I'm not going to read that whole thing out. But do you have more copies of this or just the one? Just the one? Well, we'll hand these out. I do...I know Danielle had a couple points. There's a little bit over authority with the way it's kind of written right now, giving too much. Also, the...we have a director, executive director who also has a lot of the same roles, so we just don't want any conflicting issues. Mostly, it's just supposed to be overseeing role, especially with the issue that we had with rogue commissioners going to the marketing agency and telling them to do things. It confused Madden. They didn't know whose authority they were supposed to listen to. And so really, it hurt our relationship with the marketing agency. Not necessarily to have this in place, but having this in place could have helped stoke some of those fears and point things in the right direction.
What do you think of this, Mike?
Well, I think it's good. I mean, you know, we created the...or we, the position was created basically so that the commission would have, you know, basically a direct voice, you know, from what we do. When you're, you know, dealing with a million-dollar ad agency, it's good to have that voice from the commission that, you know, sees, hears what's going on and participates on a weekly basis. The great thing about Madden is we meet on a weekly basis with them. You know, the liaison sits in, sees, hears and basically has a voice in terms of what goes on. And I think that's a very positive thing. In the past, we've not had that type of a situation and I think this was a pretty good step. So I'm...I'll go back and review that again. It seems a little rusty to me, having seen it the first time, I forgot about a couple of things in there. But this is a positive step.
Okay.
Full agreement.
I just don't want it conflicting with your role.
Right.
And also, you know, when it comes to what is the role of the commission, as chair, I would never even dream of calling Madden and saying, do this or do that or don't do that. That's...I am a commissioner, but if we all did that, I'm not sure what agency would even want to work for us, you know, with seven different people calling and making demands and stuff. And that's the trouble, too, I think, with even with our financial director, if we were all calling and giving them a hard time, it's like, you know, this is not our role to do that. As a commission, we make decisions as a group, not as individuals. So...but I'm definitely open to this. If you want to work on it and send it to us before the next meeting, we'll put it on the agenda for the next meeting, if everybody's in favor of that. Okay?
Yeah, and I mean, that's kind of what brought up the whole issue was...
The chair overstepped their bounds.
There was the back and forth of like, hey, I'm the marketing liaison, why are you going out and doing this? And he's like, well, your title means nothing. And I'm like, well...
Okay.
Yeah.
Let's give you a title.
Well, let's put a definition to it then.
I guarantee you, as chair, I will not be doing that.
Well, and that's...and I think I've said it once earlier, didn't I? But putting your faith too much into individuals is the reason that things like this exist and have to get created, so.
I understand. Okay, we'll address it at a meeting next time. And this was given to us for just our information?
Yes. Ladies, greatest.
Let's all press.
All right, thank you.
Just review.
All right. Anything else, anybody? All right. Again, welcome, Heather, welcome, Robert. Appreciate you being here and your input. And we'll adjourn our workshop. We'll see you two weeks on the 28th at 6 o'clock here.
Do we have to make a motion? Do we make a motion?
No.